Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March 17th, Raymore City Council Work Session. We have three items on the agenda tonight, beginning with the results of the City Hall Tower Assessment. So Eric, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Last June, we observed damage to the cap of the tower out here at the front of City Hall, and we asked Burns MacDonald to come. They came and did some work for us for free, just some initial work, and they indicated that the tower seemed to have shifted out of plumb by approximately 11 inches, and they did suggest that we retain the services of a structural engineer to look at it more closely, which we did. Structural Engineering Associates was retained in November, and they have now provided a report, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Mike to go through it in more detail.
What our structural engineer did was take a soil boring adjacent to the tower, and what they found is that the tower is sitting on organic material, topsoil, and what has happened over time is that has compressed, and that's why, and under the tower, it's the edge of it, or quite a bit of the footing is on the organic material, and when that compressed, then that allowed the footing to lower, and then the tower rotated. What they are recommending is that the foundation be underpinned, and bedrock is about 16 feet down, so what they are recommending is a number of columns be installed adjacent to the, and attached to the footing, drilled down to the bedrock, and there may be some ability to jack the tower a little more plumb, but for the most part, it would just be locked in place where it is. They estimate a cost with engineering and a pretty good contingency of just under $73,000 to do that work. We did talk to them, and they feel that at this point, the tower is fairly stable, but they do recommend that it be addressed as part of next year's budget cycle.
All right. Open up for questions. Councilmember Kellon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How far back into position do they think they can get it?
Not very much.
Not very much?
Not very much.
Is there any concern with the wind force on it, with it leaning as much as it is? You know, that's kind of what I worried about when I heard about that it was leaning, you know, and it's leaning towards the south. What would a stiff north wind, straight line wind do to that? You know?
Well, they felt, the structural engineer feels it's fairly stable, and then once it's pinned underneath, it'll have a foundation down to solid bedrock, so it won't rotate any further.
Now, when they pin it, I'm going to use my pop can here. If that's the tower, from what I'm understanding, they're going to run pins downward and then attach into the footing like this?
That's correct.
Okay. What I'm kind of curious about is the shear of that pin.
Well, it's actually kind of like an L-shaped bracket. If you go on, they do it on homes on a regular basis. You know, they go down and pin, and it's a pretty stout bracket, and a hydraulic ram and screw, so it's a very stout connection to the footing.
Is there a length of warranty on the work, or what are we looking at there?
No, sir. This was all done at the time that the building was built.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. I appreciate, that was one of the questions, but more on the, what kind of a warranty will we have on the fix itself if it does not, you know? Like I say, that shear really, that weight on that pin, the shear of it kind of bothers me.
Yeah, it's not really a pin. It's more of a bracket. They don't show it really well here, and I can find, I can provide Eric with an example, or Mr. Berlin with an example that he can send out, but it's a really stout, basically an angle iron that the footing is sitting on.
And all I had, we haven't put it out for bid yet, and whenever that occurred, you know, we could ask whoever we sign up to do it, what kind of warranty. Councilmember Huber?
On, this says page two, where they were talking about mudjacking and installing the resistance piers. What I didn't like reading was continued settlement of this soil may occur, but the rate of settlement will slow over time. Why do we need, do we even have it? I went out and took a look at it after I got here. It's freestanding. It's just an architectural feature to be attractive, make it a little bit different. Why don't we just get rid of it and not have to worry about any future settling or anything like that? What purpose does that tower serve outside of the thick?
Well, one of, and it is an architectural feature, and we did talk to the structural engineer about that. One of the functions it does provide is it supports the city of Raymore arch and sign. So even if you took the tower down, you would have to construct some type of a wall on the east side there to support that big, the beam and the stucco column there, and it was their initial opinion that it'd probably be about, by the time you demolished the tower and came up with another support wall, you'd be looking at probably comparable dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that when the weather is bad and we come in, the overhang that we have here is open, so this might be a good time to take down the tower and do something about putting a canopy over the entrance on the northwest side so that the snow doesn't blow in and it's not slick. There might be some other issues, you know, besides just the tower leaning, that it might be, if I was remodeling my house, that's something that I would look at to say that maybe the approach into my home was more secure than this.
Mike, as a follow-up question, on page two, the second bullet item there, where councilmember Huber noticed the continued settlement of the soil. Is that the soil under the tower, or the soil under the sidewalk, or is it both?
It's both. If you look at page nine, the way, where that tower is sitting is on the excavation for the foundation wall. So they overexcavated for the foundation wall, then filled it in, and should have filled it in with structural fill, then poured the footing, and it's all the way up to grade. So where the sidewalk is, and you can see it on the side of the building, all of that material over time has consolidated, and the sidewalk is settled. So what they're recommending with regard to the sidewalk is to mudjack it, and then over time, it may settle a little bit more, and then it will need to be mudjacked again.
If we reduce the height of the tower, you know, say, take it up to the first setback, which is marked by the white, it's the first white ribbon, yeah, banding in the column. If we reduce the height, which then in turn, by function, reduces the weight, would we lessen how much compression that we would get over time?
Not enough, not enough that it wouldn't have to be underpinned. If that's what you're, what it would perhaps reduce is the number of piles that would need to be attached to support the weight, but you can't get enough weight off of it to prevent it from consolidating.
Other questions? Nope, okay. Thank you.
I just, we would, you can expect, we'll be planning on placing this in the 2015 budget to address this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a fan blowing so hard, I can't hear too well. But now, what is, are you going to go forward with this then, or are we going to be looking at some other options, or what are we going to be doing in regards to this pillar that's rotating and sinking?
I was planning on putting this in the 2015 budget to have this work done.
But we don't know just exactly what we're going to do, do we?
Well, the study gave us some pretty good guidance there, so I think we've got enough to put together a bid and proceed with the work.
No matter what we do out there, put an awning over or something like that, and any of that stuff, we still have to fix this tower, which means, and decreasing the weight of the tower really doesn't have any impact. The soil will continue to settle, so there's two parts. One is the pinning, where I still get the kick out of 16 and a half feet down to the bedrock, and then the mudjacking for the sidewalk. Now, the pinning, since that's down to bedrock, the tower doesn't move anymore, but because the sidewalks are going to be just mudjacked over time, we may have to mudjack those again. All right, we'll move on to the next, thanks, Mike. The next item, absentee voting, and I've asked for a discussion of this. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right. English is, what a concept. Abstentions, not absentee voting, abstentions in voting. We could talk absentee voting too, but it wouldn't be right. So, Eric, is Joe going to take this one? Joe, I'll give the floor to you.
Well, Mr. Berlin's staff report of March 17th, 2014, I think is a pretty excellent presentation of the problem. I think it came up because we had an unusual vote the other night due to some abstentions, and I thought it was probably a good idea that the council be reminded of the provision of Code Section 110-250B, which states unless legally disqualified, every member should vote on every question. And so I have usually interpreted, when you have approached me about are you disqualified, that that goes to the financial and conflict of interest concepts contained in Chapter 105 of the Missouri statutes, and so I provided some material about that, which I also deliberately provided to the Planning Commission and a couple of seminar, training seminars, and probably to this council, but not as recently as the Planning Commission training, to know where you have direct financial interests, or. Bill Blod's been excellent observing when there was something that might benefit. Her husband and his role as a police officer in police issues has been very sharp in raising those and so on, when those have gone on, and Mr. Moorhead, when we've had things that might come before him and his work as an attorney. So in any event, the abstention, and then how are we going to treat the abstention vote, I have, we, I believe, the custom's always been here as long as I've been city attorney, that we not count the vote either way. There's some dicta or things in Robert's Rules of Order that would indicate it could be counted with the prevailing side, but I think that's bad law for us because we have such unusual, different voting requirements on different issues, that it makes a big difference sometimes, just the absence of vote not being counted either way, and one who abstains, I don't think is indicating they're in favor or necessarily opposed to what happened. So my recommendation would be to leave the practice where it is now. It is laid out very clearly in the park board bylaws, which have been worked on more recently than probably some of ours, stating, "When there is a reporter or contended conflict of interest, the member shall repay him for voting declaring the basis for his abstention, and the abstention should not be considered either a yes or no vote, and therefore ignored in counting of votes." So, that's the background on the issue, and I presented, there's various kinds where it becomes important here, sometimes where it takes a supermajority to pass the issue or override a veto or something, and then on any given night, when you're here and there's eight of you present, but one abstains, then suddenly we have the four-three problem where it takes five to enact an ordinance, and the mayor's right to vote in the case of the tie, of course, doesn't get reached if there's an abstention and there's only seven. So.
Questions? Question? Councilmember Moorhead?
This is questioning comment. Apparently, I'm the only one that's actually exercised this over the last year. I would point out that at the last meeting, and this was something I was going to raise on Monday night coming up, in the public session, is that I was, normally, and the mayor can obviously back this up, when I've had known instances, I've tried to approach him and say, hey, could you give me a second to kind of throw out my disqualification? I think we've kind of blurred the word just informally by calling it an abstention, but because I'm going to take the hard position on Monday night, that I didn't know the applicant until actually I asked some questions and discovered that there was a development that he was starting, that I was representing a portion of that development, and just felt at that moment to immediately, I say sometimes even recuse myself, but in essence, I was legally disqualified, and I know that when the vote was counted, that was, it was a vote that counted, and I would argue that I was legally disqualified, therefore, just as I did with the thirsty earnings issue, where I would leave the dais and come and sit in the audience, that my vote should not have counted at all, because it wasn't an abstention, it was a legal disqualification, and that, you know, so I'm glad this is before us tonight because this is something that I'm unfortunately having to deal with every couple of months. The one thing that I'm, I guess, in review of this, the park board's bylaws are consistent with the 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, which states that an abstention is not a vote, that it is, in fact, to say vote to abstain is a misnomer, misuse of a phrase, that the person in essence steps away and that vote is not counted. I would point out that our council's Rules of Procedure, which I guess is up for discussion tonight, whether we need to change, it says, "A council member who votes to abstain," and the plain meaning rule on that would be interpreted as that's a recognized vote. So I think this is the issue that I hope we can focus on, because I had an instance where I was, when we had the issue about a month or so ago regarding the school board support for Kansas State Missouri, where I felt that I needed to abstain and voted that way, because my fear was, while I, it was a substantive objection, it was a lack of jurisdiction, therefore, if I voted no against it based on the clauses, the preambulatory clauses in the ordinance or the resolution, if I voted no, I'm actually voting the antithesis of the premises in those, you know, in the enabling language. So I actually felt that it was, I couldn't do that either, because again, lack of jurisdiction means you don't take a position either way, and that's why I chose to abstain in that instance. I thought we handled it right, that that vote, my vote should not have counted. Now, I think we actually did count that vote, though, as an abstention, if we go back to the minutes and look, because we did have eight members there. And so, to me, I don't feel that there's a dramatic problem before the council here, and I guess if there is, it's mainly because of me, but unfortunately, I think we do need to get this discovered. What unified path are we going to take and how this is going to get recognized? Robert's Rules of Order is not the law. It is something that under our, believe our ordinance, that we have adopted this as a policy, but it is not, it does not trump an ordinance, it does not trump the charter, and so I think, you know, we need to focus our discussion topic on that, to see if our language is correct and if there's any ambiguity there.
Joe, would you like to address the points that the council member brought up?
No, those were too hard. I don't know that, so what you're saying, Eric, if I understand it, is you don't vote to abstain, you abstain because you're legally disqualified.
For clarification, I think that I've had instances where it's been two totally different things. A legal disqualification under our language is not an abstention, it is a disqualification, meaning I am not a member of the quorum, while an abstention, I can be a member of the quorum, but yet not vote. I think there are two different things.
Okay. In the second instance, are you voting to abstain?
According to the language presented under our rules, it says, the plain meaning I would interpret as yes. Personally, I mean, to be consistent, I think Robert's Rules of Order says no. It's a, even their use of the phrase, they identify in their dicta, it's saying, it's a, it's a poor use of language, but it's not.
It's a non-vote.
It's a non-vote, so it's not a vote.
And if I could just take a moment here and paraphrase what the lawyers are talking about, because you lost me there. You lost me there. And it's a paraphrase, so I don't want to put words in either one of your mouth, so remember that it is a paraphrase, and somebody yell as soon as that light goes out and I'll get it again. So when the code provides, unless legally disqualified, every member shall vote on every question, your comments were twofold. One is, to be disqualified, you're not going to vote. You're disqualified, you can't vote. The second point, and this is my paraphrase, a vote to abstain is a vote.
For clarification's sake, Missouri statute, and when we were at the MML, the Annual Conference, they were very specific to state that if you are legally disqualified, you can be removed from office for voting on that issue. So therefore, my position, consistent with theirs, is if I announce that I am legally disqualified, then I'm like, I'm not even in attendance for the purpose of that vote, so there is no yes, no, or abstention.
Okay, and I'm clear on that part. It's the second part that I'm not clear on. Were you suggesting that there are, that every member shall vote, and there are, unless they're disqualified? And there are three positions that a member can vote? They can vote in favor, in opposition, or abstain?
My position, and this is the lawyer in me, and I apologize, it's, I interpret our court rules as using the language identifying that an abstention is a vote, but we also, in another section, adopt Robert's Rules of Order, which says an abstention is not a vote. So I'm just merely pointing out what I think we have in conflict with our language, and that we need to pick a path, because in the instance of my abstention on the letter, if I was removed, if the abstention stated that it was a non-vote, then there were three abstentions that night, therefore, the vote went three yes, two no, three abstention, therefore, it passed, and that's actually how we recognized it, and so I endorse how we've handled it before. I think we need to, we need to pick a path on this, though, because we may have people using abstentions for other reasons, and we need uniformity, and that's why I'm saying I'm seeing two different places here that may be in conflict unless we interpret it and stick to the interpretation.
Councilmember Wesco, and then Huber?
Because the language that says that every member must or shall cast a vote, when it says that an abstention, they are voting to abstain, then that meets that legal qualification that our charter requires, because every member shall vote, and an abstention, at least in certain parts of our language, say that they are casting a vote to abstain.
Well, councilmember, this is our problem, because if we employ that specific sentence, then yes, it makes rational sense to count the abstention as a vote, but then in another section, we have it to where it works the exact opposite. So that's the inherent conflict with this. We need to pick a path and stick with it.
Doesn't our charter and our rules, don't they trump Robert's Rules of Order anytime that they're in conflict? So because there is a conflict, we automatically must divert back to what is stated within our charter and ignore the Robert's Rules of Order.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that briefly, I would also point out that we've had another instance earlier in the year where we had a pretty protracted discussion about the plain meaning of a rule, that ultimately, we had some clarification from a circuit court judge on. So the dilemma here is, is all this is, yes, I think we're all on the same page, we all see the language. The problem is, is we need to pick a resolution, otherwise, every time there's a vote, if somebody doesn't like how it's turned out, they're going to argue one over the other, and we're picking sides there at that point.
Councilmember Huber?
When I read Robert's Rules of Order on this, they said you cannot force anybody to vote. You cannot do that. But then our charter and our rules and our procedure say, yes, we will vote. So when I went back to Robert's Rules on that, it says, when it gives the ranking order of rules, and it comes down from the state, the federal government, the state in our charter, and then our Rules of Order, our special counsel of Rules of Procedure, and then the Robert's Rules, and it says our special counsel rules of procedure take precedence over, it's specific, takes precedence over Robert's Rules, which are general in nature. So we would go then with our rules, which say we have to cast a vote. That's the first thing that I was having some problem with, with Robert's Rules saying one thing, and then our Rules of Procedure saying another, and based on this, we would have to vote unless, like you or Sanja, have a conflict of interest because of positions that you hold. So the rest of us might not have that as much as you two would, but we do need a policy of some kind to see where there, because I abstained on one, not because I had a conflict of interest, or I stood to gain by it, but because I had an emotional problem with it based on the fact I'm a longtime resident of Raymore, and I just couldn't bear to see something happen. So I voted not because I had to, but from an emotional point of view, and I think sometimes we do that, because there's something that you are opposed to, but you don't have any financial gain, or you don't have any legal reason for abstention. So I think abstention has to be honored in the way in which it was meant, that we do not cast a vote on that issue, whether you want to call it your way of thinking, or Joe's, or whatever it is. If I abstained, it is, I do not want it counted yes or counted no. I am saying, I'm not voting on that issue, considering me is not here. I'm here because of the quorum, but as far as counting my vote one way or the other, don't do it. Now, does that help, you know? Because I don't have the legal experience you all have, I'm just telling you how I feel about it.
My comment, and I'm going to, once I see Joe over here stop turning pages, I'm going to give the floor back to him. Yeah, so you'll be turning pages for quite some time. The comment that I would make is twofold. The first one is, is that our city code says, unless legally disqualified, every member shall vote on every issue. The second part of my comment is the paraphrase that I gave to Mr. Councilmember Moorhead, which is, apparently, it looks like there are three votes that a council member can make, yea, nay, or abstain. Abstain is a vote neither for nor against the issue.
I'm just wondering whether or not abstaining for any particular reason other than a disqualification results in disenfranchisement of those we represent, and whether or not we ought to even be deciding to do that.
Is a financial interest the only reason for a legal disqualification?
Not in my opinion, no. For example, if you were a landowner within 185 feet of the proposed zoning or change, that would be a legal disqualification, in my opinion. Financial ones also apply.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you all remember, there was an issue came up about making, out in Chuidia and Huber Estates, making them rural estates, and I abstained because I live in that area, and my husband and I had been the ones that had developed it, so I felt that I should abstain from voting on that.
I certainly have listened to council members and have given broad discretion in abstention if a reason like that or other reasons existed that made the council member feel they were not partial or not able to. they were not partial or not able to vote on the issue. But the mayor has read you our code, and it certainly is not as broad as the discretion we have been granting to abstain, and that's one of the problems. And then Derek, or somebody not in our memo, read the rules of council rules, and I would agree that, A, those overrule Roberts Rules of Order, yes, if they have a conflict, and B, those would insinuate to be- Yeah, and although stating the council rules of procedure, it's outlined for me, says, "A council member who votes to abstain must state his basis for the abstention." So now we're back to where you were. Councilmember, and, and your question to me is, I think you are, you must have a basis for why you're doing it. I have not, when asked ahead, or even when I've heard them, held anyone to the strict legal disqualification standard. The school district vote was a classic, which is, I don't think you were legally disqualified, you abstained because you felt, and I think two other members cited in your reasoning, as I recall, it was Councilmember Kellogg, I think, and, and someone else. So-
Mr. Mayor, again, my position here is, and I want to be very careful, because we keep saying, if we are disqualified, we abstain. The, the code, our charter is very clear, or code is very clear, unless legally disqualified. Once we are legally disqualified, there is no abstention. We are removed from the dais. We are not a yes, no, or abstain. And so therefore, I intend from this point forward, and, and that's why this was very helpful, when I have a conflict of interest that arises, I will not use the phrase abstention. I will use the phrase legally disqualified, so that way, we, you know, there's a delineation there. Because taking a position where you want a third position on a question is not the same thing as a disqualification.
Right. And, and, and I tend to agree, and I think, I believe it was you that mentioned that once disqualified, they probably should stop down from the dais to do, you know, do something in an affirmative way that says, there is no vote occurring from that, that member of council. However, going back to something that Councilmember Huber mentioned, and, and it's a paraphrase of, of what she said, that she abstained from voting for an emotional reason. Now, that's not a disqualification, but that means that, as stated earlier, it, it means that the, paraphrasing, that ward doesn't have any representation on that vote, because somebody had an emotional issue. I'm using it just because it's an easy example to use. That's not, that, that is a vote to abstain, which is what, what your point was making. It's not a vote yes, it's not a vote no, it's a vote to abstain. And do we want to allow a, a member of council to disenfranchise the people that they're representing because of an emotional issue?
I was being honest in why I was going to abstain, and maybe honesty wasn't the best policy, I don't know, but that was, that was what it is. But I do think that you are correct, that we should step down from the dais when we are abstaining, and I think we should also, I believe it's somewhere, it says we can take part in the discussion, but I wonder if we're not going to vote, if we should even take part in the discussion.
Well, you misstated. A disqualification is not abstaining. We're treating them right now, or at least in my mind, I am, treating them as two separate items. Was it Kellogg first, Kellogg, and then, and then?
Under what you just said, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. You said that- Can I have you repeat? I don't want to misquote you, but it-
Good evening, everybody. This is the March 7th. How far back do you want me to go?
About a minute.
Okay. The, what I, my understanding of what's being discussed right now is there's two separate parts. The first part is disqualification. Disqualification means that you've got some fiduciary interest or something, and if you are disqualified, you will not vote. You'll hop off the dais, go sit in the corner, until the item is, is, has been finished. That's part one. Part two is that there are actually three votes that a council member can make, yes, no, or abstain. My concern is, is that what are the limits to abstaining? If you can abstain for an emotional reason, you can abstain for any reason, and that disenfranchises those people that you're representing.
Yes, and by the same token, by the same token, in the case, now, it's going to go a little bit off, off left here, but in the same case of a tie, in the same case of a tie, the mayor has the option, luxury, or whatever we want to use there, to break that tie. He has the option. Can, the choices the mayor has to break an option is to vote yes or no, in, either in favor of an issue, or in opposition of an issue, or by de facto not voting at all and allowing the, the vote to die. I don't see much of a difference there. Why are we not discussing that, that also, that the mayor has the luxury, or the ability, to allow a, a topic to die on the dais, on a four-four tie, instead of forcing the, the mayor to break the tie, one way or another?
I, I think the difference would be that if, if there is a tie and the mayor votes no, it's the same thing if the mayor didn't vote. The, the issue dies.
I would disagree with that. It, it, it allows the mayor the luxury of not taking a side, but getting the luxury of allowing a topic to die without-
Right, I, again, I-
Without having to fall on the sword.
I, I, I gotta, I, I am going to disagree, because if, it, voting no or not voting at all has the same results. Councilmember Boehner.
I'm just, you know, I'm-
Can we stop the sidebar conversations? Go ahead, Councilmember Boehner.
I made the comment about, you know, perhaps that's disenfranchisement, and I'm wondering if, if the language in there that says that every council member shall vote was, was put in there for that express purpose, so that there would always be some kind of representation. I'm just a little, I'm a little muddled, just like this question is about, you know, what are the narrow parameters that define what an abstention is and why?
Wesco, and then Delka, Delka, one?
I want to go back to the concept of the legal disqualification. Instead of Charlene saying she was emotionally, whatever the issue was, what if she became ethically conflicted, to where, or any of us, you know, to where we don't feel that we have enough information to cast a vote, one way or another, but the vote is called for, yet, you know, I don't have enough information to say yes, I don't have enough information to say no, I become ethically conflicted because I can't in good conscience say yes, I can't in good conscience say no. Do I then become legally disqualified? Or do, is that the just, is that a legal justification for an abstention?
I would view it as the latter. You're not legally disqualified, but you've stated your basis for your abstention is there was insufficient evidence or material presented to permit you to form an informed vote.
Councilmember Delka, one?
I agree with, with Mr. Boehner. I, I think as elected council members, we are obligated, I mean, that's our job. Our job is to represent our constituents, to put our personal opinions aside. It's, as a council member, it's my job to vote what's best for the people I represent, what's best for the city, whether it's what I want, whether it's something emotional for me or not. Um, I, again, agree with Mr. Boehner, I don't understand that the three ways to vote doesn't, I don't think that sounds right to me. I think when you abstain, you choose not to vote. I'm, I'm worried that having three ways to vote makes it really easy for people to manipulate the votes. Oh, I don't want to be recorded as saying yes or no, so I'm, I'm going to sit this one out. I think that it's really important that we have a real reason to abstain. We have, like I said, we, I think we have to put other things aside, aside sometimes, and, and do our job. This is our job, this is what we've been chosen by the people to do, is to make decisions. And if, if you're not able to do that, I think you need to have a really good reason why, and I think that you should be able to state your reason why, and it shouldn't just be because I don't feel like it tonight. You know, I don't think that's fair to the people we, we represent.
Okay, Kellogg, Wesco, Morehead, that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where I was conflicted on that particular vote, you know, I remember back, I want to say it was back maybe three, possibly four years back, to a school bond levy, where I was sitting on that dais, and Mr. Adams was representing Ward Three, and he was, and I'm not, I'm not trying to slam him or anything, because he, he did what he did out of convictions, and, but he was stopped from having the council take a stance on the, the bond levy issue of the school district. The mayor said, at that time, was Mayor Alonso, said that has to do with the school district, it is not the city business, it's a different entity, we are not going to have that discussion here. And by, in all fairness to Mr. Alonso, he also stopped one of the citizens from the, from the city coming up and chastising Mr. Adams during that same meeting, saying, we're not going to do that here, I'm not going to let you chastise the council for that also. Now, fast forward three or four years later, here we have another issue coming from a different taxing entity, the school district, wanting our support. How can, you know, this is where I'm at, in my thinking, how can I not take a position on something four years ago that I felt very emotional about, you know? I, I, I had my opinions on that, but I respected the, the council and the difference of taxing entities and the governing bodies, and we stayed out of it. I saw the parallel. I felt that we should have been staying out of it. What it boils down to is policy of the mayor. We had a mayor that would not allow that to happen four years ago, but just last month, we have a mayor that would allow it. So, you know, I, it, it goes back to integrity for me. I agreed with, with Mayor Alonso, we had no business in that, as far as the body. As far as citizens, as Mayor Alonso said back then, he was all for us having the ability to, to do that individually, and there was a lot of controversy over that. But we did, as a council, at that time, say, that has nothing to do with the council, we're going to stay out of it. And I think that, that same philosophy would have been better served a month ago, but there, it's different. So that, that's where I was at with it, and that's why I chose to abstain, you know? I agree, I agree that a vote can be manipulated by abstaining. I do, I, I see that easily. I don't like that, and I don't think that should be, you know, that should not be the, the reason for abstaining. It shouldn't be. You know, so that way you're on the, the other side that doesn't have to reconsider this. That's, that's procedural bullcrap, is what that is. So, but, that, that's my spiel on it.
Wesco, and then Councilmember Morehead, and I didn't see any other hands up, so-
You know, I, I don't necessarily agree with the, the thought that an abstention actually disenfranchises anyone, because actually, you know, there are things that were presented before us that, you know, the, the outbuildings or the accessory dwellings, you know, there's only one person in Ward Two that that whole thing even applies to. You know, so if I abstained from that vote, do I disenfranchise the people of my ward? No, because it truly doesn't apply to them. Just like, you know, anything that applies to people who are on farmettes. Well, there are no farmettes in my ward. You know, so if I abstained, do I disenfranchise, you know, do, do they not get representation? No, because what we're talking about truly does not apply to them. So I think there are cases which, you know, there, there's no harm done, because what is being presented truly doesn't apply. And then the other flip side, I can see, actually see where there are certain cases where certain things that are presented, where abstaining is actually in the best interests of the people who you represent, because the end result is, is the manipulation. You know, I could, I could see the justification for that, too, not that I agree with it, but actually by doing it, you are actually doing exactly what the people of your, your ward that you represent want you to do. So, you know, it, it can be looked at either way.
Councilmember Morehead.
Okay, well, this took a while to get back to me. Okay, first of all, there's a long, long, I mean, there's an entire libraries on political philosophy and disenfranchising of votes. I would point out that, the, while wonderfully philosophical concepts, that's not really how it typically plays out. First of all, the, the most communication I've had from Ward Two was my abstention regarding that school vote, because the residents communicated to me, they didn't want me taking a position. Once they heard that, they actually went, oh my God, you're absolutely right, we don't want to take a stance yes or no on this because of any backlash off of it, pulling away from it, actually, Mr. Morehead was doing what we wanted you to do. So I'm not sure, and, and there's a lot of reasons to, to abstain, not to legally disqualify, those are, those are more set in stone, but, and manipulation of votes, I will respectfully say this, if, if we're going to talk about somebody abstaining to manipulate a vote, I've seen people, even before I was on this council, that voted yes or no for dumb reasons. I mean, you know, I applaud Councilmember Huber saying, hey, I took a position because I was emotionally struggling with that, because at least that's a reason, and she, a sincere reason. But I've seen people get up on the dais and not read the material, and get up and vote just because they saw their friend vote. And, and so that's just as disenfranchising philosophically, again, and since that was brought up, I, I agree, there could be potential for disenfranchisement. I'm not sure that you can necessarily eliminate that in and of itself, just with this issue. It's, but I draw back to the language here, and, and what I kind of went with Mr. Willarth in the beginning is, we have a language construction issue here, because part of our, part of our operating rules, be it charter, code, whatever, says that a abstention is a vote, yet there are other things that we also have in our rules that say abstentions are not votes. So the problem is, is where do we go with this? I will tell you that I think abstention is, is a, is validly used, it's used at other levels of government, I personally, and, and, and Mr. Holman is, I, I consider him a good acquaintance, but when he takes that dais in April, on that very first meeting, he didn't participate in the minutes from the previous meeting. Actually, he should be abstaining, because he did not, he wouldn't know whether they were valid or not, to support him. So the argument is, abstention, under our rules, is a valid, recognized choice, because it does say, every member shall vote on every question, but it points out voting to abstain. And we have, we can't get rid of abstentions, because all our governing documents are riddled with the word abstention. So we don't get to emotionally cherry pick whether we employ, employ this or not. The question is, is we need to make sure we're employing it uniformly, and we take a position on it. And, and actually, that's why I thought this was being brought up in the first place, was just to make sure we're consistent with our application.
No, it was being brought up, because I, I, I didn't know. Other comments? Councilmember Huber?
I'm wanting to know where we're going with that. We've had a chance to talk about how we feel on it, and what the laws have said and everything. Are we going to come up with some sort of a policy on it? I think, are we all in agreement that an abstention is a proper vote? I think we all are, haven't we? Is it just a question now of when we want to be able to use that abstention? What is it that we are, we're going to gain from this, so that we actually come up with a policy of some kind?
Councilmember Boehner.
I think that- There we go. I think maybe we should look at perhaps removing the language that, that calls it a vote, not saying that we would remove it from our, our choices to pick, but the language that describes it as a vote would be removed. pick, but the language that describes it as a vote would be removed.
I agree. I think an abstention is a non-vote. I think, I don't, I don't agree with abstention being counted as a vote.
Well, if we move it, if we remove it from counting as a vote, at some point, if enough people abstain, does that eliminate the quorum? I mean, if we count it as a vote, then the quorum still holds. But if we do not count it as a vote, then if, if four members, if four members abstain, then does, does that end the meeting?
Well, you stopped turning pages, so.
I've always interpreted that if you had the presence of the majority of the body here, you've got the quorum to conduct the meeting. The abstention was just a vote on one particular, a non-vote on that particular issue. The majority of the remaining quorum would still rule on that issue unless, and why it's so important here to know, don't forget, we have technicalities for certain things that require more than just the majority of the quorum. It takes five to pass an ordinance. It takes six to pass one over a mayor's veto. We have certain items that require, so it takes six if there's a legal protest on a zoning matter. So knowing those, those technicalities are still in place, the abstention does hurt getting business done because though it's a non-vote, we still have certain, where we need an affirmative number of the majority or more to pass the business. But in my opinion, the quorum isn't lost. That's my opinion.
Councilmember, thank you, Morehead. And then Abdellgawen?
We were going so good there for a couple of meetings. And, and I agree with Joe. I mean, the, it would not destroy the quorum for the meeting. Now, it would affect the ability to vote, for the passage of the particular item we are voting on. No different than if somebody motioned something forward and it died out of silence. So, you know, if it became, you know, so I, I think there's a, but I will say this much, and I appreciate the fact that we haven't gotten too deep into the unsundry use of how we vote and do things because I don't think that's relevant here. I mean, if somebody wants to manipulate whatever, they can do it in many different ways outside of what we're talking about today. I would hope nobody would purposely walk off the dais just to tamper with a vote. But at the same time, I would also point this out. I'm voted in by the members of Ward Two. I'm governed by the members of Ward Two. And I don't want seven other council members passing an ordinance telling me how I have to vote. It's, we each get eight individual votes. If somebody wants to abstain and not be counted, that, that may have significance within their ward. I would hope that nobody would do it to manipulate. But at the same time, we do possess that right on the board. And we did take an oath when we got sworn in to abide by the laws faithfully. I don't remember the exact oath, and maybe I'm embarrassed I should, but I took an oath to be honest and sincere in what I do. So, I mean, even if I sometimes don't make a great decision, I have to stand by that.
Member Abdellgawen?
I think, I think, Mr., I was just going to say, I think Mr. Willarth's opinion just shouts the importance of everyone always voting. I mean, the rules of our city are based on everyone on the council voting how they think is best. And, you know, if we have people just, again, not wanting to make a choice, then it makes it harder for us to get the votes we need to pass certain things. And, I don't know, I, I still just think that it's, it's a way of manipulating the votes without having to be recorded as being for or against. And back to the issue that you guys, with the letter, if, the, the issue was, should we send the letter or not? It wasn't, do you agree with the letter or not agree with the letter? It was, should we send the letter or not? So if you think it was, in my opinion, if you think it was out of the control of the city, your vote should have been no. Don't send the letter. I, I mean, that's how I see it, clear cut in my mind. So, I think it's our obligation to make that decision. And I think, based on the, the rules that we have to follow to pass ordinances, to pass certain things, they're written with all eight council members voting.
To answer Ms. Hubach's question, what I would interpret out of what we have here, Ms. Hubach, is that if you're going to abstain, that the code, the rules permit such a vote, but they also call for you to state the basis for such a vote. We've been a little loose with that application of it. And I would only say in the future, as you consider, if you're not disqualifying yourself and not participating, if you're going through the discussion, and then when you get up to the point where you're going to abstain, be ready to state your basis as to why you're abstaining.
And, and my, my read of the discussion here is that there is no limit to the basis of, of, of abstaining.
That's your read of what you heard in here?
Okay.
I, I, I would only respond that while our language does, and I do wish to honor this, unless legally disqualified, every member shall vote on every question, to limit it to just a yes or no, that's actually infringing on our ability to make other choices that are legally allowed to make, which is an abstention. So, and, and while that may for simplicity's sake make things easier, I would point out on that school board letter, the question was not whether we send the letter. The, the statements and proclamations made within the letter were stated in the resolution. And I objected to what we would be sending, not just the sending of the letter. That's what, if you go back and read it, that was actually the question. And that's why I stood by that.
Councilmember Hubach?
In the municipal league, a number of years ago, they had, they had an article on something like that. And it, they said, we should not only leave the dais, but we should actually leave the room because our presence there was detrimental to people making a free choice. I don't know whether the rest of you feel like that or not. Should we actually leave the room?
Councilmember Wesco?
I, I wasn't going to answer that, that question. I was going to point out that, you know, you, anybody who's watched the movie Lincoln here recently, the abstentions were just as critical as the yay votes for getting that very important amendment added to our constitution. You know, so removing abstentions, you know, we do a huge disservice, not only to the history of our, of our nation, but to this body in itself.
Other comments? Councilmember Kellogg?
Don't know how germane this is, but I will point out, there is a certain politician in Washington DC that was famously known for voting president many times when he was in the state legislature in Illinois.
Any other comments? Okay, as I understand it then, where we have this is, if you're disqualified, if you've decided that you're disqualified from voting, you will not vote. You will not take place in the, in the discussion. You will remove yourself from the dais. I don't think it's necessary for you to remove yourself from the room. I'm scanning to see if I have, okay, there's general tacit agreement there, that you do not have to remove yourself from the room. That's part one. Part two is, with respect to the city code section, it says unless legally disqualified, every member shall vote on every question. The members have a choice of three votes. Yes, or an affirmative vote, yay, no, negative vote, do not vote in affirmative. And the third one is to abstain. And you may abstain for any reason, as long as you state that reason. I'm scanning, okay, there's, there's agreement there. Well, I just wrapped it up. I'm not going to let you guys talk anymore. I'm kidding. Councilmember Kellogg, followed by Morehead?
I remember during my time on the planning and zoning, when, when Joe gave the training back then. And then I believe one of the seminars I, I went to during one of the MMLs out in Jefferson City that spoke to abstentions and recusing, I think it was more to recusing the self, to remove yourself from the dais and definitely remove yourself from the discussion if you're going to recuse yourself. That way you don't influence either way, one way or the other. I think it's, you know, that a suggestion or, or a mindset was to remove yourself from the room. So, you know, those, you, you, it's more to protect the, the one person that's recusing themselves of being accused of improprieties. You know, what, what bothers me about removing a self from the room is, you know, how do we know when to come back? You know, if, if we had speakers out in the lobby to where we could hear, you know, when the discussion was over and that, I, I would understand that. You know, it wouldn't be such a big deal here in Raymore because it's just a matter of Ryan saying, Charlene, go get Kevin, you know? And, but, I, I, I think there's some validity to definitely removing yourself from the discussion, either for or against. And, but that's, that's in recusing. That's not so much abstention. Would that, would that parallel?
Actually, you segued into mine very good. I, I agree with that. I mean, there's nothing in any rule that I'm aware of that requires us to leave the dais. The reason why I did that during the thirsty Ernie's discussions was because, and actually, I did not represent them just because I had been before the council regarding the predecessor. I just felt that there was, I had access to information that I just did not wish to influence a vote. I left the dais because of one very important reason, the TV camera. And as Mr. Willarth is also very sensitive to ethics and conflicts of interest, I didn't want to sit up there and inadvertently make a nod or a gesture that could be interpreted by anybody else. And so by leaving the line of sight, and since we are separated in this room by that dais, there's a position of authority. And by leaving that, I'm in essence ceding that authority for that brief period of time. And now, in the instance of the other day, it was a different type of conflict. I had already announced it. There wasn't going to be a lot of discussion that I could involve myself in. But again, if I speak, that's the same thing as the nod. I'm influencing, which is in violation of the conflict of interest. So that's why if you, if there's a legal disqualification, you don't talk, you don't gesture. And for me, so not to be misinterpreted, I just remove myself altogether. You never get burned if you don't stand near the fire. So, it's better to sit behind Mr. Willarth for a moment. And when the discussion's over, I step back. Now, I also wish to point out that we do have a specific rule under our charter, I believe it's the charter, not the ordinance, that we are actually not authorized to leave the room unless the mayor recognizes that. So therefore, in, in, with the expectation of honoring that rule, that's why I don't leave the room. I, I, sitting right behind, I'm immediately available, but I'm honoring the others, the other rule.
Got a quick question for Mr. Willarth, but in response to what you were just saying. I, I really like the idea of if, if you are not going to vote, remove yourself from the dais. You're, you're, you're not, it becomes clear at that point that you're not participating in, in that, that vote. Councilmember Kellogg had mentioned, it wasn't disqualification, it was, it was recusing themselves from a vote. What, what, what's the process for recusing yourself from a vote? And would you, I mean, would it, if you're not going to vote, then you wouldn't want to be on the dais, is my observation.
The, the process you've been discussing is recusing. What, Councilboard, that is recusing. Getting down, getting out of it, get behind, that is recusing oneself. Sitting silently through it, and then just not voting, that's where I think you're electing the abstention route. And you better state your basis later because it's not clear to, to the public like, and to me and to everyone else, like you were participating and you were in it. Most of you remain silent on most issues till it gets to the vote. So, it's always a surprise to me to hear an abstention. And I just, and, and finally not to beat the dead horse, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood that our documents call for you, the council member who votes to abstain must state the basis. And I'll be, in light of what we've heard, what's going on, I'll try to be a little stricter about bringing that to the mayor's attention or requesting a council member to do that during the meeting as long as I last. Okay?
Councilmember Abdellgawen?
So, so if a council member participates in the discussion and just chooses to abstain at the end?
Because they have a headache. Would be a reason enough.
Okay.
Councilmember Morehead?
To recuse.
Almost, almost said Wesco. It was that close.
To recuse is, that's a term of art used to identify the act of demonstrating or identifying the legal disqualification. So it's not a separate act. It's the recognition of the legal disqualification. But I will tell you again, since I tend to be the one most apt to use this, I'm going to use the word of the, of the ordinance, which is, I will announce a legal disqualification and leave it, that way there's no ambiguity. And, and I will also confess that I think I actually did say, I, I'm legally, I didn't even say that. I said, I have to recuse myself, so therefore I'm abstaining from voting. So I even, I even violated that myself, I believe, this last time.
Other comments? All right, we'll move forward with, with that. The next item is, oh, this is procedures to be followed when installing a newly elected city council members and newly elected mayor. And this is, this is your item. Councilmember Hubach?
I've been attending council meetings for over 40 years as a citizen. And in all that time, what we did when we had an election, it was always under new business. And it would be the last thing that we would do. We would swear in, we would certify the results of the election. And we would swear in, and they would become official members. We'd get them oath, and they'd become official members of the council. About, what, in 2000, or 1999, I guess it was, the people passed an, an ordinance or a charter amendment saying that they didn't want to wait until the end of the meeting for the new people to take office. They wanted it to be done at the very beginning. And so they made it then as an amendment, that it be done as the first order of business. Well, it would be very, very simple way to handle that then. It's when it's the first order of business. If you want to put it in the first, and it has to be as a, a new item, then what you do is you suspend the rules and you bring it forward. You vote on that issue, and then you go back to your regular rules of order. And that's what I'm asking that we do. What we've been doing right now is we've been having two meetings. We've been calling the special meeting, a regular one, and a regular meeting, we've been calling it the special one. And we've made it complex when we don't need to. It's very, very simple to handle. Like I said, just when the mayor says, announces that he has had, has a quorum to do business, then all we have to do is have one of the council members stand up and then say that they wish to have the rules of order suspended to take care of that item. And then we go back to the, the rest of the business. And what really bothered me was when I was reading the municipal code, and it said in there that there was no way that you could take new business and have it as the first item of business. And that's incorrect because you can. That's what the suspension of rules and our rules of procedure, our council rules of procedure is all about. So what I am asking is, is you saw the ordinance that I sent in. I'm asking that that be on the agenda for our next meeting and that we vote on it up or down. And there's only, the only questions I had on it, and I'll ask the two attorneys of that, are, is it in the agenda or is it on the agenda? That I didn't know whether it made any difference. And sometimes those kind of things make a big difference. So I wanted somebody more knowledgeable than me to say, putting it, is the business that we have at each of our regular meetings, is that in the agenda or is it on the agenda?
Councilmember Wesco, and then Morehead?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, the way that we're currently doing it now, is it legal and legitimate in the way that's set forth?
Yes, in my opinion. And I apologize, I can't remember what the furor was over, but I was here for it. There was concern that the old council in some way wasn't going to follow the wishes of the people or was going to take some certipitous action or something was going to, and they were wild times we were in, in the late 90s. We were in the newspaper far too often for unpleasant things. Resulted, I had it with great complete with Hubach, she may well have walked the streets, I can't remember, but we got charter provision 9.3. And then the ordinance that I found for you was adopted to implement it. So the way we've been doing it has been pursuant So the way we've been doing it has been pursuant to, uh, the ordinance, uh, nine nine oh four seven. So I believe it's a legal compliant way with nine point three. I'm saying Ms. Huback's manner also may be compliant with nine point three, I'm not saying it's wrong. I think they both maybe, the, the point was, it was to be the first order of business at the next meeting.
No, the next regular meeting is what the people said, that's what they voted on. It has to be the first item of business at the next regular meeting. And our regular meetings, we have, uh, what, supposedly have twenty-four of them, they are scheduled for the second and the fourth Mondays of each month. And when I went into Roberts Rules of Order, they said, you do not have a, um, special meeting at the same time, same night that you're having a regular meeting, because the purpose of a special meeting is to be something that has to be done on an emergency basis, and it cannot wait until your regular meetings. So our regular meeting that we, we have takes the entire agenda. And what we did at this last, last year, we, um, had two meetings. We called the special meeting, we called it our regular meeting because we only heard two items, and in our regular meeting, we always have a, a established agenda. That established agenda starts in with people being, uh, being recognized, then it goes on to the consent agenda, and then we have old business, or unfinished business, and then we have new business. That is what our normal agenda is. But we didn't do that, and, uh, what we did is, we referred to our regular agenda as a special, uh, meeting, and then we took the special meeting when we only heard the one item of, of business, and we called it our regular meeting because we had to do that in order to meet the qualification of, uh, when the people said that they wanted the first, um, order of business at a regular meeting. This is not a, this is a special meeting tonight, you'd say, this is not a regular meeting. The regular meetings we have, we have, uh, they do not have to be called by the mayor or himself, or by any three people. They are established throughout the year. People know that on the second and the fourth of each month, there will be a regular city council meeting with a, uh, an agenda that will be published, they know the time, they know the place, they know everything about it. That's what a regular meeting does. And what we, we ended up doing is, in my, in my mind, you may not agree with it, we lied, because we said, a special meeting is a regular, and a regular is a special, and that's not true. All we had to do was just step up and, and move the new business, that one piece of new business, to the very beginning of a regular meeting, and we were all through.
Ms. Huback, I don't, nobody lied. The, the procedure was laid out in ordinance nine nine oh four seven, and yeah, the staffs used it in every election result thing since. We've had the, the meeting, we've had the meeting, the, the, what do you want to call it, the reception for the new people, and then the regular business took place in what's called a special meeting, as called for in section two of the ordinance. So, uh, it, it, nothing's been non-transparent, this has been the transparent way, it's always been conducted, to my recollection, since the year two thousand. It's unusual, I will tell you, there's some city councils that have the old council sit in on the old business, but that's not an option here anymore because of the way of the charter, the provision. With respect to your proposed ordinance, Ms. Huback, and I've read it, I, I would suggest, and, and maybe Councilmember, if you know what it is, I'm not sure what you meant when you defined the term, a new election item. So both in the...
You're not sure, I'm not hearing you right. What did he say?
It says in your new proposed ordinance, section one, any election item, which has not been before the city council, and in section two, it says, in the event it should be necessary to hear a new election item prior to its proper order in the agenda. I wasn't sure what the term election item meant.
Let me see what, uh...
And while you're looking for that, I, I, I want to make a comment here that you said, uh, repetitively that it was a regular meeting. The ordinance nine nine oh four seven says a regular, regularly scheduled meeting. The city charter, section nine three, says a regularly scheduled council meeting, and the city code, uh, section one ten one sixty-five says a regularly scheduled meeting. Not a regular meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting. Now, while you're continuing to look at your notes, we'll go to, uh, Wesco, Moorhead, Adelgoon.
Well, and that was my understanding of, with regularly scheduled meetings, you know, it's my understanding that after the first meeting, after we have the election, we have this regularly scheduled meeting to, uh, you know, read, do an emergency reading of the results and swear the new people in. So that's the regularly scheduled meeting that happens after every single election, at least that I have noticed. Uh, the other thing is, is that the, the current way that it's done, you know, I appreciate being able to take that break, go down and have the reception, spend the time with my family and supporters, and, and then come back up and attend to business, and, you know, they go about their business. So, uh, you know, I know that my family appreciates that process, um, you know, for what it's worth.
Councilmember Moorhead.
The, the first one's just kind of a tongue-in-cheek response to the question. I offer no legal opinions. I defer those to Joe with, with one exception. As to the in or on the agenda, I would go to the legal authority of George Carlin, who once said, when he was asked to get on the plane, he goes, no, I want to get in it. And when told he had a non-stop flight, he goes, no, at the end, I want the plane to stop. So I don't think there's a, I don't, Joe, there's no legal significance to enter on. But as far as the question regarding the, the special versus regular, et cetera, I mean, uh, we, our, our regular meeting is done at seven o'clock on Monday, I mean, I, I don't have a direct conflict with this language, but would it be better to call the election re- results as the special meeting, like at six o'clock? Believe me, I know some people would rather get out of here earlier than later that night, and, um, do that as the special first, and then the regular at seven? I, I don't know, I mean, Joe, you got to answer this, I don't think there's any legal significance either way, is there?
No, the legal significance is to get the new members installed first before more business is done. That's the legal concept the charter nine point three was directed toward.
Member Adelgoon.
I just had one question about, um, Ms. Huback's proposal. I wondered if we called the meeting and did the roll call and then suspended the rules, then the roll call isn't going to reflect the new council members? I was, I was concerned about how that would work, if we seated them after the roll call was done.
There's, we have to have a roll call in order to do business, in order to do, because that's the first thing that says, the mayor says, call to order, and according to Roberts' Rules of Order, then it doesn't start until the mayor, the meeting doesn't start until the mayor says, we have a quorum, we can do business. That then, and the next item of business that we have would be the, um, installation, the, the elec- election. One of the things we say is, we refer to it as certifying. We don't certify anything. The county clerk certified, that all we do is accept what she, what she tells us. We don't certify anything. But we do have to certify or approve the, the qualifications that they have, that they have met the qualifications in order to, uh, serve in the position. The, that we have to do. And then, that's, we have done that in the past, and the idea that we have to have a special meeting and a regular meeting the same night, this is not common sense. The idea of a special meeting is, you have your regular meetings here every two weeks, and in between, something has come up that you need to have a special meeting on, so you don't want to wait until the regular meeting, you have a special called meeting at that time. But as far as our, our agenda, it is set out for us in our regular meetings, and we are not following it. And I'm saying we need to follow what it says, because it says in, um, our charter that we will do this at the first, was a regular scheduled meeting in, uh, April, isn't that what it says? I don't have it in...
Yeah, it says at first regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, council, uh, councilmember Huback, uh, Mr. Willarth had two questions for you about in section one, uh, his question was, what was an election item? And in section two of your proposed legislation is, uh, new, new election item. His question was, what is an election item? Did I phrase that correctly?
I think I took that from the existing code, in the municipal code.
Well, the, the municipal, the charter, I'll, I'll start there. The council shall declare the results of any municipal election, regular or special, at the next regularly scheduled council meeting following such election. The first order of business at that meeting, the candidate receiving the highest number of votes, um, for each office shall be declared and elected and inducted into office at that time. And the city code reads very similar to that.
And I would note to you that the current procedure, where we just set it out and it is the first item, takes out any possible problem alike, there not being a motion or a second to suspend the rules and place the item first. It's got to be placed first there by the staff and by whoever prepares the agenda. So not, we'd ever have a night where somebody wouldn't make the motion and have a second, which in case that unforeseen thing would take place, and I wouldn't have to answer that question, that you can discretion.
Okay, this is Wesco, and then Kellogg.
And I believe I argued that point when I made the motion to amend one of our charter languages. You know, the other issue I have is that, and, and I think, uh, Councilmember Adelgoon is, is correct in her, her line of thinking, that if we start the meeting with one council, and then we address this issue, you know, then any vote that afterwards, the roll call would be incorrect, because there's a change in council members. So it, wouldn't that legally void anything that transpires in that meeting? So we have to have two separate meetings, one to, you know, in, in install the new council, and then the one to actually get the business done. Because if, you know, if, if, uh, Boehner, he, he's there to roll call in, well, if there's a changeover in four, well, and somebody else is, is, is voting on it, that poses a huge legal issue, because, you know, four council members, you know, or eight council members started the meeting, and halfway through it, you changed over, and you had four that weren't the original ones who voted to start the meeting. I mean, that, that creates, I, I would think, many legal issues.
Besides amending the ordinance, which I'd raised in my memo, Mayor's made a very good point, that section one ten one sixty-five of the code also outlines the same procedure we're using now, and it would have to be amended and changed if we're going to adopt anything different.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Mr. Mayor, I went by the municipal code on page fourteen.
Councilmember, uh, just a minute, I've given the floor to Councilmember Kellogg, you can go right after him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Huback did bring up a topic that came up in my mind when we went through the charter amendments as far as, um, term limits. On what Eric just gave us, the agenda for April eighth, two thousand thirteen. New business A, certifying April second, two thousand thirteen election results, emergency reading. Mrs. Huback, I think, is correct that we don't technically certify the election, that's done down in Cass County by the, the clerk. Aren't what, isn't what we are doing is accepting the certification from the county clerk? That's the first question. Then, the follow-up question for that, are we required, under law, to do that, something that the law says it's going to take place anyway? You know, because that was kind of the, the argument that was, was taking place when Mr. Wesco brought up the, uh, the, uh, term limits, is, are we doing something that is going to take place ultimately anyway by, by a state statute?
It doesn't take place by state statute, and I, maybe we don't want to use the term certifying, maybe it's publishing, but there's always been an acceptance and acknowledgement by the council of the results of its council. The state isn't watching this election results, the local people are. The state doesn't, there's no act in Jeff City that certifies this, it's done here. So the term is certifying or publishing, we can look into that if you wish. And you're right, there's not a discretion. I've had to urge, and I've had some councils that didn't like the results of some elections in my time here, but, uh, the, it is a ministerial act to accept and publish those results. Jean just left on me, but I, I, they have the term, this, we get the, I don't know if it's the certified results, but we get the...
Jean, what's the term of art from the county? We get the, the, yeah, the certification election's done by the county, you receive that. So we're not actually certifying, but we are publishing or accepting certifications, they're act...
Yeah, ratifying's a word, you can...
Just a, a, a different term, that we ratify the, um, the election results, as, you know, as opposed to certifying.
That's something that the staff can look into and determine if, a better language. Councilmember Huback, you have the floor.
Basically, what we're doing, we're taking what the county clerk gives us, and then we are saying that the individual is qualified for their office. That's basically what we're doing, because, uh, but anyhow, if you will look at the existing ordinance, your existing ordinance, which is bill twelve seventy, that was done on ninety-nine oh four seven, they referred, and this is the ordinance establishing the procedures to be followed by the city council when installing newly elected council members and newly elected mayor. The introduction of any item, I just took it from them, so what you all meant by any item, I have no idea, but that's what you said in here, and that's what I used. The introduction of any item that has not been before the city council prior to a current meeting is considered new business. And here's what is wrong, since it's inappropriate to consider new business prior to disposing of older business. We don't have old business, we have unfinished business. And to begin with, it is, uh, there is a procedure to allow you to do new business prior to old business, and that's what the suspension of rules is. And then it says, the old, it is important that the council not delay the conducting of the people's business, so that the first regularly scheduled meeting following the election, the election of the mayor and the council members will be scheduled per existing ordinance, and it may contain only one item of business. The ordinance is certifying the results of the election. Now, when you do that, that then is in violation of what our charter says, that's in violation of Roberts' Rules, and it's in violation of, um, our rules of ordinance, our rules of procedure.
I beg to differ, the, the city charter describes that, uh, in section nine three describes precisely what that ordinance described. What you were referring to was the preamble before the actionable statement in the charter. Councilmember, uh, Moorhead.
I'm going to play with the semantics of the language here for a minute, Joe, I'm sorry to keep putting you on the spot here like this, but actually, we just got done talking about the fact that we don't actually certify anything, that, that is merely an acknowledgement. Do we not have a consent agenda for things that are not business that we take before the old and the new business? And a mere recognition of something is not actually business. We're not actually doing anything because the county already did it for us. We are merely just recognizing something, which we do with proclamations, and we do under the consent agenda. So should, maybe just in, as number four on last year's agenda, instead of being called new business, you could almost put consent agenda, and that item is taken up. And it actually would meet what Ms. Huback is saying, as not actually being old or new business.
If you wish to handle it in that manner, I think we're going to have to amend the ordinance in the code section I referred to, and it could be done that way. And perhaps a more appropriate term, uh, though this ordinance uses the term certifying, Eric, so I don't see wrong why it's been used, it does in nine three say, the council shall declare the results of any municipal election. So if you want to change certifying to declaring the election results, that would be completely consistent with the charter. It does say it's got to be the first order of business in the charter. So if the consent agenda is the first order of business, I guess you're complying still with that.
I'm just trying to find some compromise with the concern Ms. Huback is presenting, that if it is something that has to be done prior to old business, well, we do have something, and a declaration would fit within that without being in conflict with the existing ordinance.
And all I've expressed on the legal side is that the current procedure, I think, works as in compliant with nine three, and it could be modified and still be compliant with nine three. I'm not saying there's a right or wrong in these two approaches, I'm just saying, I'm not sure there's much of a problem, but if the council feels there is one and wants to make a change, we'll need to modify that ordinance in that code section.
Councilmember Huback.
Well, I guess what, what I'm really after is this one meeting... Well, I guess what I'm really after is this one meeting, not two meetings, but just one meeting. To me, it is, you'll have to forgive me if I use the word "stupid," but it is stupid to have a, two meetings on the same night, one of them called a special meeting and the other one called a regular meeting. Robert's Rule says you don't have both of them at the same time, that there's no point in having a special meeting at the same time you're having your regular meeting, because it's your regular meeting, you can take up any issue that you want to. And that's what I am, I am after, is one meeting. Now, if we were being paid by the meeting, I could understand us wanting to have two the same night, but we're not paid by the meeting. We're paid to conduct the regular business. And on April, they, the first meeting in April, part of our regular business is certifying or whatever we want to call it, what comes from the county. That's what I'm after. I just use the language that you already had in the existing ordinance with section one and section two. I took the same language and I just made it applicable to the situation that the people said they wanted. They did not want, the reason they voted for the, to be the first item of business, they did not want any old council members, or defeated or outgoing, whatever you want to call them, they did not want them conducting any business. And that's the reason that they went from the beginning instead of at the end, because their justification was, once the clerk, the county clerk, has certified the results of the election, those outgoing council members are no longer in the, should be making any decisions. And so, they felt that if they had it at the very beginning, that would take care of it then, because the new people coming in would be able, as you know, when we meet with the, have our meeting, and we ask for the reports from the staff, we ask questions. This would give the new people the ability to also ask questions because they would not be sworn in.
Councilmember Wesco, and then Councilmember, did you have your hand up, then Councilmember Morehead, and then Councilmember Kellogg.
I'm okay with changing the term to "declaring." I don't think we can put this in the consent agenda from the standpoint of, it's a bill, and it has to be read as an emergency, since the bills do require two readings, if I'm not mistaken. So, it can't be a consent agenda item, it has to be a new business. And as far as, you know, you know, in our national and even our state and even our county elections, you know, when people get elected in November, you know, the county clerk certifies the election, and those people don't take office until January, you know? So, as far as, you know, the people who were voted out still continue in their seat, you know, for a month and a half, two months, which, you know, I look at our current process now, and, you know, the old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," you know, really kind of comes to mind, and, I mean, it's served us well, it's in legal compliance, let's leave it alone.
Councilmember Morehead, and then Kellogg.
You know, I do have a concern about the idea of trying to shove this into one meeting, and I guess I'll play out the lawyer in the room here from this standpoint. If I step up there and I take roll call, actually, I'm not sure, do I, I mean, I know I could obviously voluntarily walk off the dais, but don't I have to be removed? I mean, at some point, we could have as many as 13 people making decisions contained within one meeting. I don't think we can do that. That's, I think this opens up a big legal can of worms here. We do have two separate things, they are done and delineated at two separate times, same day, but two separate times. But I'm fearful that if somebody took roll call and announced themselves as president, they could theoretically go, "Hey, I'm not leaving until I vote to adjourn." And so, I just think this is a slippery slope.
Kellogg.
Thank you. I don't think it would work inside of consent agenda because when we typically vote on the consent, it's, there is no report from staff or the city clerk or anything, and that, I see that as a must-be to, for us to take a vote on that. So, if it's in the consent, that won't allow the clerk to read the results and give her professional required opinion for us to do what we need to do, because she, our clerk has to fulfill her duties for us to do ours. So, it's kind of a procedural thing. The first domino has to fall before the second, so I don't see it working at the consent part of the meeting at all.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Huback.
I'm going by our council rules of procedure, and it lists out here what our agenda is, and it goes on to say that on item 618, "Suspension of rules upon motion and a majority vote of the council at any meeting where a quorum is present for the transaction of business, any provision of these rules may be suspended or changed for that meeting as to such supervision or change would not violate the city's charter, the city code, and the state law." This doesn't, that's what I proposed, doesn't violate any state law, and it doesn't violate the city charter. And it brings it in just to one meeting. Other places do it, I don't know why it is that we can't do it.
Well, we've discussed it this evening, and the council members have stated their positions on it. If you'd like to bring it forward, that's fine. From what I'm hearing, there isn't a whole lot of support, but you may bring it forward.
I think you ought, Mr. Mayor, I think you ought to know that if you all end up next, in the April election, calling a special meeting as a regular meeting, and a regular meeting is a special, I will file a protest, because that's not what it says.
Well, and, Councilmember, as you have in the past, the earliest email that I could find was from 2009, there was only one other member of the council that was here back then when you formally protested the two agendas presented for Monday night as being against our city charter. So, I, Councilmember.
Can we call the first regular meeting, regular meeting A, and then the second regular meeting B? And then that way, nothing is named special, they're both named regular, one and two, A and B, X and Y? I mean, if we're caught up in the semantics of what it's named, can we just name them regular meeting?
And this is my opinion, my opinion only, I don't get a vote on it. What we're doing currently works fine.
To do that, Councilmember, we would have to amend 110-165B, which says that the city clerk would publish notice that the city council meeting was held on the same date as the meeting described in subsection A above. The special meeting agenda will contain all the agenda items normally contained in the regular meeting. So, we could have two meetings, but right now, we're following the code.
All right. And that takes care, I think, of my notes. And that takes care of the work session. Councilmembers Huback, Kellogg, and Stevens have called for a special meeting, so I'll call to order the March 17, 2014 special council meeting. Mr. Berlin, would you call roll to confirm a quorum?
Councilmember Del Gwadaw.
Here.
Councilmember Wesco.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Huback.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Piffo, absent.
We have seven members present, we do have a quorum. Should please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there's only one item on the agenda, a request from Councilmember Huback to enter an executive session as authorized by 610-021, subsection three. Do we have a motion?
I have, I did ask for a special meeting, I asked for a, but still I-
Right, we're going to go into an executive session, we need to do that from a meeting. Do we have a motion?
I, I'll move in, if we can set it in session to discuss personal matters.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Berlin, roll call, please.
Councilmember Del Gwadaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Wesco.
Yay.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Huback. Councilmember Kellogg.
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the motion passes, we'll go into executive session, we'll return only to adjourn the special meeting.